Testing, testing. Test one, two, test one, two.
[Inaudible]
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 Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask members of council to take their seats. We'll begin the meeting in one minute. [Inaudible] Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. Bienvenue à la conseilure municipale de la ville d'Or.
Welcome to City Council meeting of November 8, 2017.
For the 8th of November 2017. For those who are able to, could you please rise for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing for the singing of our national anthem? You can remain standing. We'll ask councillor Riley Brockington to introduce our very special guests who are here to sing the national anthem.
Thank you, your worship, and to members of council and ladies and gentlemen. It is my honour to introduce to you five members of Committed Praise. The Worship and Choir team from Emmanuel Pastoral Church, which is located on McCarthy Road in the Hunt Club neighbourhood of River Ward. The church was established 48 years ago in Ottawa by Bishop Rodolph McEwen Senior, the first church leader Emmanuel, and the first black pastor in Ottawa. Bishop Brian Williams, his son-in-law, is the church's current pastor. Committed Praise has been part of Emmanuel Pastoral since the beginning, inspiring and enlightening attendees through song and worship. Various family members and long-time parishioners of the church have played a part in Committed Praise since its inception, with the worship team being led by the pastor's daughter Vanessa Williams. Their choir is a mix of youth leaders, classical musicians, professional students, a police officer, and ministers. Committed Praise has performed at the Blues Fest Gospel Tent, Carleton University's Urban Praise Night, and sang at the Antiques Black History Night. In addition, they have opened events for various gospel and mainstream artists. Committed Praise has performed here in Ontario and in the United States at different concerts, concerts, and conferences. As an interesting side note, you may recognise Vanessa and her sister Tiffany Ellis from their performances in Canadian Idol back in 2006. Please join me in welcoming Committed Praise to City Council as they lead us in an a cappella version of "O Canada".
O Canada, our home and native land.
True patriot love in all our first command.
Quand on va supporter le pays, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est due et pour payer, impubliant ses exploits.
God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[1271.58][1271.58][Applause]
Well, what a beautiful rendition of "O Canada", thank you very, very much, and thank you councillor Brockington for suggesting our special guests to start this meeting off. It's now my honour to invite Rabbi Cantor Daniel Ben Lola to the podium for this meeting City Builder Award presentation. Je m'invite maintenant-
It's an honour to invite Rabbi Cantor Daniel Ben Lola to the podium for this council City Builder Award presentation.
Thank you, and it's great to have family and friends here to celebrate your many accomplishments in our community. Thank you. Councilleur Leeper, welcome. Cantor Ben Lola is a very active member of our community. He tirelessly dedicates himself to volunteering and helping those less fortunate across the city. He has worked as an educator at Talmud Torah and as a Judaic advisor at the Tamir Foundation. He is also a frequent visitor to educational institutions to deliver interfaith messages of hope and peace. In fact, his interfaith work led to the Universal Peace Federation and Interreligious and International Freedom for World Peace, recognising him as an ambassador for peace. But for Cantor Ben Lola, music is really at the heart of everything he does. He uses music to bring people together. He regularly visits the sick and elderly and sings for them. He'll visit hospitals and nursing homes simply to perform for the residents. Many have commented that his lovely voice is comforting and warm, and that he brings great joy to these individuals. He works tirelessly with adults with disabilities, breaking down barriers through song. He founded the Tamir Nez Hama Choir comprised entirely of adults with developmental disabilities. I've had the honour of hearing the choir on a number of occasions. And he's also the founder of the SGCC Sheer Ottawa Choir. Cantor Ben Lola is also committed to his Jewish faith. He founded both Le Col Ben Lola Bar Bat Mitzvah and afternoon school to help men and women of all ages realise their bar and bat mitzvahs. Naturally, Cantor Ben Lola has been well recognised for his volunteer efforts in community building. He is the recipient of the Elaine Rabbin Social Services Award, the 2013 Governor General's Caring Canadian Award, which I know councillor Hubley has also received from our council, and the 2004 United Way Community Builder Award. Today, Cantor Ben Lola is recognised as a city builder for his many contributions and for demonstrating an extraordinary commitment to making our city a better place. It's with some sadness that I note that after 23 years, that Cantor is returning to Montreal to become Cantor and Ritual Director at Sheer Siddique Congregation. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Cantor Ben Lola for his many contributions, along with his wife and kids who are here with us. And he tells us he's going to be coming back many times to Ottawa. J'aimerais cesser cette occasion pour remercier-
I would like to take this opportunity to thank Cantor Ben Lola for his many contributions.
anxiously await and cherish your visits back to Ottawa. On behalf of councillor Leeper and all members of council, it's my pleasure to present you with the Mayor City Builder Award for a job very well done. Congratulations.[1480.18][1480.18][Applause]
Your worship, Mayor Jim Watson, councillor Jeff Leeper. Councillors of this great city, Rabbi Allen Bright, dear family and dear friends from Ottawa and Montreal. If I am not for myself, who will be for me? And if I am only for myself, who am I? And if not now, when? In this simple yet thought-provoking passage extracted from the ethics of our fathers, we are taught the importance of the word "me" as the persona we develop during our lifetime, within which the elements originate from others and from our society and from what each one of us as individuals can bring to others. It is with this "me" notion that I humbly address you today. The me that feels pride and joy in giving back to my community and those in need. The Ottawa community, a place my family and I called home for the past 23 years, has given me the opportunity to build long-lasting bridges with the interfaith community, where echoes of fraternity and friendship continues to resonate within these very walls. And I have our beloved mayor to thank for his impetus and support. This city has given me a platform to assist people with developmental disabilities and to fulfil their long-time dreams, and allowed me to offer solace and bring joy to the housebound with a simple visit and a song. I have to admit, it is a great feeling to be recognised, but it is a greater feeling when this honour only reignites my desire to accomplish much more. Thank you to my wife, Muriel, and all my beautiful children for their patience and support for the long hours spent outside the home. And thank you all for your friendship, my friends from Ottawa and my friends from Montreal. May we continue sharing the love that lives within each of us with people less fortunate and together create a better world for generations to come. I am forever grateful. Thank you and God bless.[1679.28][1679.28][Applause]
Well, thank you again, Cantor, and thank you, your family and friends, for coming in such good numbers to support you. Roll call, please, madam deputy clerk.
Consulier Manette.
Present.
Councillor Midic.
Present.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Elshantiiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Sit.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egley.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Consulier Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Newsom.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Cherneschenko.
Present.
Consulier Cloutier.
Present.
Consulier Blay.
Present.
Councillor DeRouze.
Here.
Councillor Moffat.
Here.
Councillor Kakich.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Here.
Le coeur met à tient monsieur le maire.
You have the call.
Confirmation of minutes for the regular meeting of the 25th of October 2017 carried. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declaration de conflit d'intérêt? None. Communications as presented, no regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports, motion important presentation de rapport. Councillor Kakich, signed by councillor Taylor, please.
That the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee report 29 plans-
Planning Committee report 53, Transportation Committee report 28, and the report from the City Clerk and Solicitor's Office entitled Summary of Oral and Public Submissions for Items, subject to Bill 73, Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of October 25, 2017, be received and considered, and that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and table the following reports as these reports relate to the 2018 draft operating and capital budget being tabled at this meeting. One, the report from the Deputy City Treasurer, Corporate Finance, entitled 2018 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets. Two, the report from Committee of Adjustment, entitled 2018 Draft Operating Estimates, Committee of Adjustment. Three, the report from Crime Prevention Ottawa, entitled Crime Prevention Ottawa 2018 Draft Budget. Four, the report from Ottawa Police Services Board, entitled Ottawa Police Services Board 2018 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets. Five, the report from the Ottawa Public Library Board, entitled Ottawa Public Library 2018 Draft Budget Estimates. Six, the report from Ottawa Board of Health, entitled 2018 Draft Operating Budget for Ottawa Board of Health. And that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider the report from the General Manager of Service Innovation and Performance, entitled FTE Analysis Report, Information Supplemental to the Budget Estimates as this report relates to the 2018 draft budgets being tabled at this meeting. And that the rules of procedure be waived to receive and consider the report from the Deputy Treasurer, Corporate Finance, entitled Bylaws to Authorize a $102 Million Venture Issue as the transaction is scheduled to close on November 10, 2017, and that the venture bylaw is required to be enacted by council in order to successfully close the transaction, and that the petition listed on the agenda with respect to Ashbury College's planned construction of a centre for science innovation on Gledwin Avenue be received.
On the motion. Carried, adopting. With respect to the in-camera item list on today's agenda, the City Clerk and Solicitors provided members of council with the details of the tentative agreement. The City Clerk and Solicitor and the Deputy City Solicitor will be available throughout the morning if members have any questions. It's my intent, when we get to that item, to approve the tentative agreement in open session. We won't go into closed session unless members wish to receive presentations from staff and ask questions what is being proposed in the city's bargaining strategy. Every fall, I look forward to the opportunity to speak to council and to the public regarding their vision for Ottawa's future and to listen to where residents would like council to focus our resources. Over the last few months, council has worked with the City Treasurer and the City Manager to deliver a budget that keeps us on a balanced path of fiscal responsibility. I'm pleased to report that we are bringing forward a budget for 2018 that focuses on securing a sustainable financial framework for the coming years, a budget that is balanced, affordable, and progressive. For the fifth year in a row, the proposed increase in the City of Ottawa property taxes is set at 2%.
Again, this year, we are proposing an increase that is progressive and it will be limited to 2%.
For $404,000, the tax change will be $74. For the average rural household, the tax change will be $60. Property taxation is the single most important tool our city has to maintain affordability for our residents, and I'm proud that council is delivering on this key commitment. It's important to listen to residents through the budget consultation process, and we have built residents' feedback into the draft 28 budget being tabled today.
We've received many suggestions from our residents and they've been integrated in the budget.
... ward councillor-led consultations, as well as four single ward consultations. The city has received budget ideas and feedback from residents, community groups, and stakeholders through a variety of ways. This includes the councillor-led budget consultations, the budget planning tool proposed by councillor Tierney, available on ottawa.ca, and the city's social media channels. As of November 1st, for instance, there were over 1,000 visits to the budget planning tool. My office, the City Treasurer, the City Manager's office, have met with every member of council and committee chairs to hear their budget priorities. I've also hosted a series of community breakfasts to hear priorities directly from community leaders and residents. Now, it's not always the case, but this year, what we have heard has been clear and consistent. Residents understand that for the last seven years, we have been focusing more heavily on transit infrastructure, which required a massive catch-up effort. Today, residents are asking us to shift some of that focus to our social infrastructure and to our built infrastructure needs. What we are hearing at public meetings or informal conversations is the need to continue to do more about the state of our roads, infrastructures, infrastructure, rather, buildings and parks, and that winter maintenance of critical infrastructure like our roads and sidewalks must continue to improve. The changing weather and patterns have created major challenges in maintaining our roads, pathways, and community infrastructure. The abundance of rain and spring flooding, the extraordinary amount of snow, and the number of freeze-thaw cycles, over 90 last year, has significantly impacted the quality of our roadways, shoulders, sidewalks, and roadbeds. Investing in existing infrastructure is not always the most popular approach for council to take. As politicians, we always like to announce something new, but I've heard from almost every member of council that our roads, facilities, and sidewalks need more attention now. The infrastructure gap is a significant challenge for municipalities nationwide. In response to these concerns, our total budget contribution for roads, bike lanes, sidewalks, and facilities will increase by $12.6 million in 2018 to bring us to $112.4 million in annual funding. That's an increase of 13%.
This year, we will increase our investments by 13% for sidewalks and various facilities to bring it to $12.6 million.
... $100 million over the next eight years in capital works. Let me give you a sense of how these additional dollars will be invested. First, as I mentioned, we will be responding to the number-one request from residents to put more funding into road resurfacing and renewal. In 2018, the road resurfacing budget will be increased by $5.6 million for a total budget of $39.2 million. That's a 17% increase over 2017. Secondly, our rural infrastructure investments will reach $42.2 million in 2018, up from a three-year average of $36.8 million. This funding includes rural roads and culvert repairs. Budget 2018 will allow the city to repair or resurface over 70 kilometers of roads in the rural area. Councillor Moffett, for instance, will see sections of Rideau Valley South and Fallowfield Road resurfaced, while councillor Derruz will see sections of Stagecocks Road and Van Rennes Street repaved. In addition, the city will be investing $24.3 million towards bridge rehabilitation in 2018. This is an increase from just under $14 million last year. This includes projects such as the Fitzroy Harbour Bridge and Anderson Road Bridge.
We have to increase our ability to repair potholes.
Ability to repair potholes. Since January 2017, city staff have filled over 253,000 potholes across Ottawa. Even with this level of activity, we have heard consistently that we need to do more. That is why Budget 2018 will make permanent the $400,000 one-time increase in pothole and minor asphalt repair program introduced in 2017, and I thank councillor Egli for his insistence on that. We will add $200,000 in one-time funds to bring the program to $8 million, an 8% increase over 2016. This funding will help us more effectively with the immediate patching and pothole needs caused by significant weather fluctuations and increased construction activity that is taking place in all parts of the city. We also need to look at innovative ways to improve the condition of our roads.
We have to find new ways of improving the state of our roads.
To investigate the possibility of running our own asphalt plant in order to ensure quality and price and to investigate new technologies that may improve the long-term durability of our roads. Ottawa spans more than 90 kilometers from east to west and has one of the largest municipal transportation networks in Canada. Maintaining our network is expensive. That's why Budget 2018 includes an increase of $2.3 million to the base budget for winter maintenance, bringing the total annual funding to $68.3 million. This is in addition to the $4.5 million base budget increase for winter maintenance introduced last year for a total increase of $11.3 million over the last three years. This new base funding meets the level of funding recommended by the independent KPMG audit. The winter cycling network will also be expanded, adding O'Connor and Mackenzie Bridge cycling lanes. Signs of increased prosperity are all around us as public and private sector investment is booming. The Conference Board of Canada, for instance, has forecasted Ottawa Gatineau's real GDP growth will be 2.2% in 2018, following a forecasted 2.5% increase in 2017. This is the strongest back-to-back increase since 2007, 2008. But the prosperity is not shared equally by all our residents. We need to continue to do more for our most vulnerable residents who rely on our city's strong network of community-based social services.
We have to do more for our more vulnerable residents who rely on better social services.
Will provide much-needed support to the fast-growing social infrastructure needs of our city. Residents want us to find a way to ensure both the city and our community partners are ready to respond to the challenges of increasing costs and legislative changes from other levels of government. We have heard from community arts, recreation, social and housing service providers who are concerned about budget pressures caused by provincial changes to the minimum wage. I'm pleased to say that Budget 2018 will meet the city's own obligations to address the minimum wage increase, and I thank councillor Tierney for raising these issues. It will also include funding to support our partner agencies to help them with their increased costs from minimum wage increases. We recognize that these service delivery agencies have few options to make up for these funding pressures. Without additional resources, they would have little choice but to reduce services while the needs of their clients are growing. This is not the right time for cuts to our social service agencies. For this reason, Budget 2018 will provide an inflationary increase of 3% to our social service agencies. This translates into an additional $675,000 in 2018 for a total annual investment of $23.2 million. Social service agencies will also see a base increase again this year, which, when added to the inflationary increase, will provide a total increase of 4.4% in 2018. This represents an annual increase of approximately $1 million in these services. This community funding helps support 93 agencies that run hundreds of essential programs across the entire city.
We've found a way of increasing our support to agencies that offer important social services to our residents.
Or $760,000 going to housing and homelessness agencies for a total of $26.3 million. The city will also be increasing the amount provided for housing programs by $1.7 million to meet the housing sector's other cost pressures. We will also be replacing $1.3 million of funding that lapses with the expiry of the federal operating agreements, bringing the total city contributions to $81 million in 2018. This is up $3 million from our 2017 budget of $78 million, a 3.8% increase. When combined with funding from other levels of government, this is an historic investment in housing and homelessness in Ottawa.
These are the record investments in this area in Ottawa.
This is a significant increase to the base operating dollars of these important social service delivery agencies. I'd like to take a moment to tell you some of the other things that we'll be doing for housing and homelessness in 2018. Thankfully, we do not face the housing and homelessness challenge alone. The role of the federal and provincial governments in housing is especially important this year. The federal and provincial governments are currently in bilateral negotiations on the social and green infrastructure funds. We are also expecting the release of the long-awaited National Housing Strategy and the Federal Anti-Parverty Strategy, literally within a few weeks. These anticipated announcements will be followed by detailed contribution agreements, funding conditions, and provincial and national priorities and benchmarks. From what we know today, given the increased support from the province of Ontario and the Government of Canada, the planned capital investments in social housing, including retrofits and construction of new units, will increase from $20.6 million in 2017 to $52.6 million in 2018. As a result, the number of new units funded will increase from 137 in 2017 to 300 units in 2018.
The number of affordable housing units will go from 137 in 2017 to 328.
Understand the city's housing funding without drawing the whole picture of how the three levels of government are working together towards the same important goals. For the most part, these common goals reinforce and support the city's commitment to our 10-year Housing and Homelessness Plan. The city and its community partners will only be able to achieve these local goals if we continue to work together with our federal and provincial partners towards shared outcomes. By the end of 2017, the city will have 401 new affordable and supportive housing units built or underway, including, in councillor Harder's ward, we opened 455 Via Verona in partnership with MultiFaith Housing, a 98-unit affordable housing community for families. In Innis Ward, councillor Minick's ward, we built 1900 St. Joseph Boulevard in partnership with Mofort Renaissance, a 48-unit supportive housing program for individuals experiencing chronic homelessness. In 2018, the city will be investing more towards housing and homelessness, as are the federal and provincial governments. But there is more news and progress to come. The city will be ready to leverage upcoming federal and provincial funding opportunities so that we can best meet the needs of our community.
We'll be ready to benefit from the funding offers from the federal and provincial government to meet the needs of our community.
In 2018, through the Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative, for a total of $37.6 million. This funding supports a number of housing and homelessness initiatives for low- and moderate-income residents at risk of or experiencing homelessness by providing them with the necessary support to find and keep their housing. The city will also receive $47 million over four years through the New Provincial Social Housing Apartment Improvement Program for repairs and retrofits. This funding will improve living conditions, reduce costs through energy conservation, and fight climate change thanks to the improvements that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The city will also benefit from an additional $4.7 million from the federal and provincial governments to develop new affordable and supportive housing that results in a total investment of $72.7 million from 2014 to 2020. The city will also receive $7 million from the Federal Homelessness Partnering Strategy in 2018. Over the last few years, this program has helped 516 people experiencing long shelter stays move from emergency shelters into permanent housing with supports. The city will also receive $30 million for local capital and operating funding through the recently announced Provincial Home for Good program. This new funding will expand the city's Housing First program, provide supports for people living in transitional or supportive housing programs, and will allow for peer support workers as well. These additional operating dollars will increase the number of rent supplements and housing allowances available. I know that's something councillor Hubley is very supportive of. This will also provide funding for first and last month's rent and unit setup. Both of these can be significant barriers for low-income residents seeking shelter.
These funds will help cover the first and last month of rent, which can be a problem for many residents.
Component of this funding will support approximately 310 households to find and keep suitable, affordable, and supportive housing in Ottawa. The capital component of the Home for Good program will support the construction, renovation, or purchase of approximately 150 new supportive housing units in Ottawa. This funding is complemented by the Childcare Modernization and Social Assistance Reform. For example, the city is receiving additional funding through the Provincial Childcare Expansion Plan and the Federal Canada-Ontario Early Learning and Childcare Plan. In 2017, the city received $13.6 million more than was anticipated to support access to licensed childcare. This funding will help over 1,400 local children access affordable childcare and will significantly reduce and possibly eliminate the current childcare subsidy waitlist for children ages zero... 0 to 6. It’s estimated that the city will receive an additional $7.3 million in 2018 as part of this overall commitment. Additionally, the province announced its intention to transform provincially-funded child and family programs into an integrated cohesive system of services and supports for children aged 0 to 6 and their parents and caregivers. These services include free programs such as playgroups, where parents can attend with their child and have access to information and supports. And in total, the 2018 provincial funding allocation for Ottawa is $8.4 million for early years in family centers, plus the $7.3 million under the childcare expansion programs. I believe that by working with stakeholders, this additional funding will allow us to continue to transform childcare and early-year services in Ottawa.
Working with our partners will continue to improve our children’s daycare services.
I’d like to thank councillor Mark Taylor, our special liaison for housing and homelessness, councillor Michael Kakish, liaison for refugees, councillor Diane Deans, Chair of CPS, and councillor Jan Harder, Chair of Planning, for their strong advocacy for these additional funds and for their continued diligence to implement these new programs in housing and childcare over the next year. Budget 28 will provide a 3% increase to our Parks and Recreation Service Agencies. This represents an injection of $50,000 to their base budget. We’ll also provide an inflationary increase of 3% to the Outdoor Rink program to meet the impact of minimum wage increases. This will bring the funding for this program to $825,000 in 2018. Affordable childcare, housing, and transit go hand in hand.
Daycare, housing, and transportation go hand in hand.
The Transit Commission listened to the calls for the city to find ways to support residents who face economic challenges through a more affordable and equitable transit fare. The 2017 budget introduced the Equipass, a transit pass for low-income residents. To date, the Equipass has been purchased by about 2,600 eligible transit customers per month, based on the last three months, saving residents hundreds of dollars a year. Thanks to the leadership of Commission Chair Stephen Blay, there is funding for the 2018 budget to introduce a single-ride equitable fare. Eligible Equipair transit customers will get the same deep 50% discount as Equipass customers. This means that a new single-ride Equipair will cost $1.75 compared to the 2018 single fare of $3.45.
That new pass will be offered to residents on low income at 50% of the regular price.
We’re aiming to make the new Equipair available before the end of June 2018, and together, Equipair and Equipass represent the single-largest one-time increase in the city’s history to support the needs of transit users living below the low-income cutoff. In 2018, the total Equipair and Equipass subsidy increases to $3.7 million from $2.7 million.
This new measure will help develop the type of city that we all wish for, a city that helps the residents that are in need to use transit in a more affordable way.
The city has also made major investments in improving paratransit service in recent years, including the modernization of the minibus fleet. In 2018, staff will be reviewing paratransit service eligibility criteria to bring it in line with industry best practices. They will expand eligibility for paratransit to include persons with developmental or mental health disabilities. As you may remember, Uber has agreed to pay a voluntary 7 cent per trip surcharge for all completed trips, which commenced in October 2016 when Uber became licensed. I have asked staff to work with the city’s Accessibility Unit and the Accessibility Advisory Committee and report back to CPS and council in the new year with a recommended spending plan for this approximately $450,000 in annual funding. We’ve heard from our rural and suburban councillors that some residents are finding it hard to commute to work or school because their peak-service buses are often full. Budget 2018 does a number of things to expand service to growing communities. Le budget 2018 propose plusieurs mesures pour améliorer le transport commun dans nos communautés grandissantes. In collaboration with the Government of Canada, we will be introducing 17 new double-decker buses to meet the growing demand at a cost of $18.4 million. 20 new routes will start this December, which will lay the foundation for future growth and ridership for the Confederation Line that opens next year in Stage 2 LRT. Canada, Stittsville, Barhaven, Riverside South, Ottawa South, Orleans, and the new development at Water Ridge, Village River Rain are some of the areas that will see new or improved transit services. As a result of this funding and the addition of 17 new buses to O.C. Transpods fleet, various routes will see increases in frequency. Some will be extended, capacity will be increased on others, and new connection routes will be introduced to provide faster travel times for customers. Budget 2018 also maintains free Wednesday transit service for our seniors. Budget 2018 met now également les mercredis gratuits pour les années. Budget 2018 will also see an increase in funding for the community support service agencies who provide transportation in the rural areas, for a total base budget of $605,000, an increase of $100,000. This program, designed to improve access to transportation services for rural seniors and disabled residents, provides approximately 15,000 trips annually to residents. Thanks to our rural councillors, Steve Blay, Eliel Shantiri, George Deruz, and Scott Moffett, for advocating for this improvement. Because of council’s steadfast commitment to the Confederation Line and Stage 2 LRT, the city and the province and the federal government are investing with confidence in the future of transit in our city. As a result of the funding from all three levels of government, Budget 2018 includes more funding to build the largest single environmental project in the city’s history, Stage 2 of LRT. And the forecasted capital spending on Stage 1 LRT in 2018 is approximately $550 million for a total investment of $2.1 billion. For every $1 billion invested in new infrastructure, 10,000-person years of employment will be generated in Ottawa, including 5,500 new jobs in the construction sector. This high level of capital investment will encourage growth, protect jobs, and improve household and business confidence. Nous investissons en capital créé des emplois et stimule l’économie pour nos entreprises locales. I want to thank the West End councillors, including councillors Taylor, Wilkinson, Hubley, Cadri, and El Shantiri, and chairs Blay and Egli. Their strong advocacy efforts led to an investment of $3 million to fund the Bayshore to Canada LRT environmental assessment, which will be completed in 2019. By working together, we have accomplished more in seven short years of LRT planning and construction than we ever dreamed possible. In 2018, we will see more and more evidence of this dramatic transformation in how Ottawa residents commute and travel within our city. But we’re not done yet because we still have more work to do to reduce the bottleneck of buses traveling inefficiently between Ottawa and Gatineau. In early 2018, we will convene our first meeting of the Joint Working Group on Transportation with the city of Gatineau. I look forward to working with my colleagues, chairs Egli and Blay, to explore opportunities for better regional integration of transit services and large transportation projects.
I’ll be happy to work with city councillor and mayor Maxime Pennaud-Jamais, who was re-elected last Sunday.
Budget 2018 also continues our council’s strong support for active mobility. In 2018, we will spend more than $7 million in cycling infrastructure through the Community Connectivity Program and through investments in paved shoulders. I’m pleased that Canada North, represented by councillor Wilkinson, will see improvements to Campo Drive from Terron Road north to Newton Drive. We’ll also be adding 15 more kilometers of cycling facilities across the city. This will help us reach our goal of adding 72 kilometers of cycling infrastructure to the city’s growing network by the end of 2018. A few examples that will be funded in 2018 include a pathway extension along the west side of Woodruff Avenue connecting the existing pathways at Nora Street to Algonquin College and the College Square Shopping Centre, an upgraded cycling facility approximately 1 kilometer in length which will connect the city Sawmill Creek pathway to the NCC pathway along the Rideau Canal and the Rideau River, an improved neighborhood connection that allows lower-town residents to reach New Edinburgh using the Minto Bridges, a new pathway linkage to interconnect the existing Hydro Corridor terminating at Pony Park at Eagleson Road to the Ottawa Carlton Pathway, and improved linkages for cyclists around the Confederation Line stations, including a pathway from Albert Street to the lower-level Pimisi Station. When combined with funding from other levels of government, the city’s total investment in cycling and pedestrian structures within this term of council will hit $80 million. This represents a 270% increase over the $27 million spent on active mobility infrastructure in the last term of council. This $80 million is in addition to cycling facilities that are built as part of the road renewal and new road construction programs in all parts of the city. One such example is the new Main Street cycle tracks, part of our Complete Streets Plan. And in 2018, we’ll continue to improve the walkability of our city with almost $3 million in funding towards various sidewalk improvement projects across the city. This is on top of the $1.5 million that will be spent to implement the Pedestrian Plan program, which advances our goal of making Ottawa a world-class pedestrian city all year round. I wish to thank the many councillors, including Transportation Chair Keith Egli, and cycling advocates Catherine McKennie, Geoff Leaper, Matthew Flurry, David Chernyschenko, and Toby Neusbaum, for their support on this front. I’d also like to thank the Honorable Yasir Nakvi, MPP for Ottawa Centre, and the Honorable Catherine McKenna, MP for Ottawa Centre, for their support of the new $21 million Clegg Street Bridge. This new crossing in councillor Chernyschenko’s ward will provide pedestrian and cycling connections between Old Ottawa South and the revitalized Lansdowne Park and Old Ottawa East. There’ll also be funding for the refurbishment of the Rosemount Library in councillor Leaper’s ward and for the purchase of land and design work for a brand-new community center and library in Riverside South in councillor Kakish’s ward. Under the leadership of Tim Tierney, Chair of the Ottawa Public Library, Budget 2018 also includes funding to continue the planning and design work underway to deliver our new central library. Positive discussions are ongoing with the federal government on a potential combined central library and archives project that would soon become an important landmark along our new LRT network. And we thank councillor Tierney for continuing those discussions with our friends at the federal government. We also heard from residents that access to quality recreational facilities is an important priority in 2018.
We also heard that the recreational facilities are a priority for 2018.
We will be investing more in city recreation and cultural facilities with an additional $700,000 for a total renewal investment of $16.1 million in 2018. This covers upgrades to our buildings, swimming pools, splash pads, fitness spaces, and outdoor courts. We’ll also be adding $250,000 to the park renewal budget for a total investment of $5.25 million in 2018. This funding will lead to improved play structures and equipment and improved park pathway lighting. There’ll also be an additional $2.5 million to improve the accessibility of our parks and playgrounds for all users. Councillor Minnick, who is also our sports commissioner, has been actively working hard to have the Blackburn Arena redeveloped and made accessible. Budget 2018 includes $1 million for this project, and we are working with MP Andrew Leslie and MPP Marie-France Lalonne to secure matching funds from their two levels of government. The funding for park renewal is on top of the $7 million for park projects already funded from development charges. This funding, for instance, will see new park development and growth areas such as Riverside South District Park and in Gloucester Southgate Dominion Jubilee Park and Hillside Vista Park. We’ve also identified funding for the city’s own recreational programs to mitigate the impact of minimum wage. Without this additional funding, recreation admission fees in the city would have increased by 6%. With this funding, we’ll be able to hold the city’s recreation increases to 2% for 2018. Avec ce financement, nous pourrons garder la hausse des frais des services récréatifs à 2%. I want to thank councillor Mark Taylor for his strong advocacy on keeping these rates at 2%, given the work he’s done in many economically-challenged neighborhoods in his own ward. This is after we managed to freeze recreation fees for three years in the last term of council. This increase represents 25 cents on the average swim or public skate admission fee. To mitigate the impact of these increases, the recreation fee subsidy program will also increase to $1.1 million in 2018, an increase of $35,000. This program helps ensure that low-income residents can benefit from the city’s recreational programs. I’m pleased to report that Budget 2018 also heralds some significant investments in core municipal services that matter most to our residents. We will hear from our Chair of the Police Services Board, councillor El Shantiri, that Ottawa Police Services is adding 25 new officers in 2018. We’ll also see an increase of 14 new paramedics in 2018. My thanks for the strong advocacy of councillors Deruz and El Shantiri on this important investment.
We will also recruit 25 new police officers and 14 paramedics.
These investments in paramedics will lead to improved response time, particularly in our rural and suburban wards. There will also be an additional 10 new crossing guards to service areas in need, as identified by the local school boards. This brings the total number of crossing guards funded by Ottawa to 209 by the fall of 2018. We’ve been proud to partner with our local festivals and arts organizations to make 2017 a year to remember for our residents and millions of visitors. There’s no doubt that 2017 will have been a tremendous year for our local artists and arts organizations.
I’d like to thank the co-chairs Jean Cloutier and Mathieu Flurry for their incredible leadership in this very enthusiastic year.
In just a few weeks, we’ll witness the opening of the new Ottawa Art Gallery, which is approximately three times the size of the existing space. In 2018, we will open the redeveloped Arts Court facility, along with the new black box theater developed in partnership with the University of Ottawa. Budget 2018 includes $2.1 million base dollars to staff and operate the newly expanded Arts Court facility and Ottawa Art Gallery. The OAG expansion and the Arts Court redevelopment project represents a public-private investment of over $100 million, and it will quickly become a new regional cultural destination, and it’s literally steps away from our new LRT station on William. The public-sector component of this project, valued at $43.4 million, is funded by the city of Ottawa, the Government of Canada, the province of Ontario, and other partners, including the Ottawa Art Gallery and the University of Ottawa. The city is contributing $17.7 million; the province has provided $7.3; the Government of Canada has provided $5.3 through the Canada Cultural Spaces program. Last year, we set aside funding to help ensure that 2018 would not become a big hangover year from 2017. I want to thank councillor Cloutier for chairing last year’s Tourism Summit and for bringing forward several suggestions to ensure that we build on the success of 2017. Grâce de leadership du Conseil Cloutier durant le sommet de la tourisme, nous avons identifié plusieurs propositions pour maintenir le momentum de 2017. We chose to invest smartly to maintain the momentum of our local arts and cultural organizations into 2018 and beyond. That’s why I announced $150,000 in base funding to launch the Arts Momentum Fund, aimed at ensuring that we continue to showcase all that Ottawa has to offer. After much work and extensive consultation, the arts and heritage community leaders have come together. Their recommendation is to use this funding to produce a strategy that will help shape the future of the cultural sector for years to come. Because of the long-term nature of this goal, I’m proposing the same base investment of $150,000 in 2018 towards the Arts Momentum Fund. This increases the base funding to $300,000 in 2018. I look forward to hearing the recommendations of the Coalition of Arts Leaders in 2018 as they chart a new future for Ottawa’s arts and heritage sector. Cultural agencies funded by the city will also receive a 3% inflationary increase in recognition of the minimum wage pressures in this sector. In 2018, the total annual budgets of cultural agencies will be $11.3 million, a base increase of $330,000. Budget 2018 also continues funding of almost $5 million that has been approved for the renewed Arts and Cultural Plan since its inception in 2013. These funds include a diverse range of cultural supports, including marketing and promotion of the local cultural scene, the poet laureate program, as well as neighborhood cultural initiatives, to name just a few. In this term of council, arts and cultural community has secured municipal investments totaling more than $20.8 million in capital, one-time, and base operating dollars. This level of investment sets the stage for success for the community-led strategy leading into the next term of council. Thanks to councillor Leaper’s leadership, the city has been working with our Thanks to councillor Leeper's leadership, the city has been working with our music industry partners to develop a strategy to strengthen this growing sector of our local economy. The group will be delivering its report to council in early 2018. I'm pleased to report that we have set aside one-hundred thousand dollars for the Ottawa Music Industry Coalition, or OMAC, to deliver on priorities that will be identified in the music strategy. One of the key tools council has to support neighborhoods in need is investment in community improvement plans. I want to commend councillor Shirelli for supporting the Bell's Cowaner CIP, which has delivered about twenty million dollars in new investments to date. The Orleans CIP, championed by councillor Manette, is also producing some exciting new business and jobs in the East End, and we were both at the opening of a beautiful new facility that has employed twenty people in the music industry in Orleans. I'm pleased to report that I've been working with councillor Flurry to ensure that Montreal Road will be the next area to benefit from a community improvement plan. J'ai travaillé avec le conseil Flurry pour assurer que le chemin montréal soit le prochain secteur à profiter d'un plan d'amélioration communautaire. Funding in the 2018 budget will enable us to consult with business and property owners to identify what measures would spur investment and bring more businesses to the area. Through the leadership of the Chair of the Environment and Climate Protection Committee, David Cherneschenko, we have heard calls to strengthen our investments in environmental sustainability, climate resiliency, and energy conservation. I'm pleased to report that the construction of our world-class LRT system will result in the single largest reduction of airborne pollutants in the city's history. Stage-one LRT will reduce greenhouse gases, GHDs, by ninety-four thousand tons by 2031. Stage-two will increase that to over two-hundred thousand tons annually by 2048. This will also have a direct and positive impact on the sustainability of urban growth in Ottawa, and it will lead to improved health outcomes for our residents. As part of Budget 2818, under the umbrella of the Energy Evolution Initiative, the city will be investing more than two million dollars in various sustainability initiatives. Nous agirons aussi en matière d'environnement. This includes energy conservation, greening our fleet, and protecting our environment. All these initiatives will now fall under the mandate of the Environment and Climate Protection Committee. Taken together with our investments in public transit, cycling, active mobility, and LRT, the city is doing more than ever to improve Ottawa's environmental sustainability. To date, more than eighty community partners, such as the City, Hydro Ottawa, Enbridge, Ecology Ottawa, the Museum of Science and Technology, and the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce, have worked together to develop a green innovation in Ottawa. Later this month, the Environment and Climate Protection Committee will be reviewing the details of the next steps for 2018. Energy Evolution also includes five-hundred thousand dollars for green fleet initiatives, such as anti-eyeling, idling, biofuels, and hybrid vehicles, and five-hundred thousand dollars for new community-based initiatives. Under the umbrella of the Energy Evolution leadership, the city's Building, Engineering, and Energy Management Team, or BEAM team, has introduced over one-hundred-and-twenty energy reduction initiatives since its inception. In 2018, the BEAM group will receive one million dollars towards new projects. With the conversion of fifty-eight thousand streetlights to LED technology, the city is in the process of saving six million dollars annually. These investments are making tangible changes on the ground. Ces investissements ont un impact réel sur le terrain. For example, the Hintonburg Community Centre, which has had numerous mechanical control and lighting upgrades, has reduced electrical use by thirty-eight percent and gas use by fifty-eight percent for an annual savings of twenty-nine thousand dollars. The city has provided electric circuit with access to its premises to install six charging stations in Ottawa, including the Terry Fox and at the Fallowfield Park and Ride Facilities in councillor Wilkinson and Harders' Wards. In 2018, twelve new electric vehicle charging stations will be installed also at city facilities. The City of Ottawa is rich in natural areas; this green space and parkland serves as a draw for residents and visitors alike. In 2018, the city will require and protect community green space valued at three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars in the rural areas and one-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars in the urban areas. We recently used one-point-five million dollars from the Environmental Resource Area Acquisition Fund to help acquire and protect important community green space, like Shea Woods in councillor Cadre's ward. In 2018, we will see one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand trees planted across the city to increase the forest cover in urban, suburban, and rural areas. Last week, Ottawa successfully issued the first municipal green debenture in Canada, which raised one-hundred-and-two million dollars. The city's green debenture framework is intended to finance environmentally-friendly projects across the city that will help us mitigate or adopt the effects of climate change, such as our light rail transit. There was strong demand for this new offering, which allowed the city to reduce the price of the debenture, saving four-hundred thousand dollars in interest costs over the life of the bond. The debenture bylaw report will be considered later today at council. I'm very proud of the balance we have achieved today. Je suis très fier de l'liquide que nous avons atteint aujourd'hui. I'm also proud of our strong collaboration with the Province of Ontario and the Government of Canada in delivering jobs, growth, and economic confidence for our residents. By working together, we have been able to align mandates to leverage outcomes for residents and to invest in the social and physical infrastructure of our city. I want to thank our city manager, Steve Katalakis, and his office, including Steve Box, and the entire management team for their hard work and the countless hours of meetings for Budget 2018. Je remercie notre directeur municipal, Steve Box, et toute l'équipe de gestion pour toutes leurs heures qu'ils ont mises à leverer ce budget. Budget 2018 challenged our very capable General Manager of Corporate Services and City Treasurer, Marion Simulock, Deputy Treasurer Isabel Jasmine, and Brian Flynn, Manager of Financial Services, to find the funding for the priorities identified by residents across the city. Thanks to the entire Corporate Services team for delivering this budget proposal. As we prepare for the future and wait for the details of ongoing bilateral negotiations, we are concentrating on six key action items. Maintaining an affordable city by meeting our property tax commitment at two percent; increasing our investment in infrastructure renewal with a strong focus on roads, cycling, and pedestrian connections; helping our partner agencies manage their cost pressures, which will help to keep Ottawa affordable for all citizens; investing in the renewal of our city's arts and culture sector with strategic capital and operating investments; building a green, sustainable future thanks to record investments in environmentally-sustainable transit and energy evolution investments; strengthening our commitment to core services with the addition of police and paramedic first-line responders. I'm very proud that this council is keeping its commitment to Ottawa residents and property taxes. This is the cornerstone of our commitment to keeping Ottawa affordable for our residents. I'm also proud that we're proposing a balanced, affordable, and progressive path forward for 2018. Le budget 2018 est la preuve que nous pouvons avoir une ville abordable pour tout, tout en investissement dans les priorités de nos résidents. I'd like to thank all members of council who contributed ideas to the 2018 budget process, including many ideas from their residents. I also want to thank the Chairs and Vice-Chairs of the Committees for their input to date and for the work ahead to facilitate the respective budgets through their committees. Merci à tous les conseillers pour leurs idées et leur participation important à ces processus budgétaires. I'd like to close by thanking my own team in the Mayor's Office, who are working closely with the city manager and city treasurer on Budget 2018, in particular Serge Arpin, Robin Guest, James Armbruster, Mathieu Gravel, Daniel McGee, Olivia Belcia, and DG Stringer. Budgets have and will continue to be about setting priorities and being prepared for what is to come. It's about being upfront with residents, and it requires an honest accounting of where we are at. We simply can't be all things to all people. And it's about setting priorities, and I believe that Budget 2018 balances the key priorities in a manner that will broadly secure our residents' support. Balanced, affordable, and progressive. This is a budget we can be proud of. Equilable, abordable, et progressiste. Nous avons devant nous un budget dont nous pouvons être fiers. I'm looking forward to your input and the public's input in the weeks ahead. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup. Councillor Manette, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, sent in by councillor Taylor. Be it resolved that the Mayor's remarks given at the City Council Meeting, November 8, 2017, be appended to the minutes of today's council meeting.
On the motion, Carrie, thank you. Now we'll have the Deputy City Treasurer will do the presentation. We ask that you hold your questions until the end, and we'll hear from our boards at that time, and then we'll go back to Ms. Jasmine. So, Ms. Jasmine, if you can bring us through the details, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're just setting up the slides now. So, today's presentation is an overview of all the budgets and is a combined amount. This includes police, public health, library, and transit. Only a summary is provided here today, and the detailed budgets will be presented individually to each committee, board, and commission. Today's budget reflects the direction approved in this term of council. It will provide an overview of the tax and rate-supported operating budget and capital budget, and I will quickly review the budget timetable for those who would like to get involved during the budget review process. The budget directions for this budget were approved in October 2016, and one of the key items was to limit the municipal portion of the residential property tax bill to two percent. This would also apply to commercial properties for a citywide tax levy of two percent. As directed by council and as identified in the Transit Affordability Plan, this budget also includes a two-point-five percent increase to the transit levy. The annual additional taxation revenues for growth is forecasted at one-point-three percent. This is the same as what was used last year. The budget direction also applies to all the local boards, who are assigned a prorated share of the increase in property tax revenues and estimated increase in assessment growth.
We were asked to continue to contribute to the program in order to maintain our infrastructure. These will increase as the long-term financial plan enunciates. In 2018, we will have three plans that are funded by our taxes for transit purposes.
Four percent revenue increase for water, five percent for wastewater, and five percent for stormwater, as approved by council in the Long Range Financial Plan for rate programs. The draft 2018 budget limits the citywide and police tax increases to two percent for a person owning a house in an urban area where the average valuation is four-hundred-and-four thousand. The increase corresponds to fifty-eight dollars per year for municipal services.
The council has also increased an increase in taxes of two-point-five percent, which is translated in an increase of sixteen percent, or dollars, should I say, for the average business owner. Garbage collection will increase by two dollars per year. So, the total increase for the average owner will be seventy-six dollars per year.
The average urban residential home will see an increase of seventy-six dollars per year, a rural home sixty-two dollars per year, and a commercial property a hundred-and-sixty-three dollars per year. The dollar value is a preliminary number. The actual amount will be based on the actual valuation of the properties and changes to the tax policy adopted by council before finalizing the tax rates. These amounts don't account for changes resulting from reassessment.
La ville possède un budget brut. The city has a total budget of three-point-four-two billion dollars. If you look at this circle, you can see that these reflect all the services provided by the city. The fifteen basic services represent sixty-one percent of the total budget. Social services, community services, six-hundred-and-seventy-one million, transit, five-hundred-and-twenty, garbage collection and water, and also capital budget, three-hundred-and-sixteen million.
Make up sixty-seven-point-one percent of the total budget. In 2018, community and social services moved into first place with the largest share of nineteen-point-six percent. Then transit second, water, sewer, solid waste third, and police services in fourth. Last year, capital formation costs moved into the top five in spending, surpassing emergency protective services, and in 2018 continues to do so. This demonstrates council's strategy to continue to increase investment in infrastructure to maintain assets in a state of good repair. This next graph shows all the sources of funding for the three-point-four-two billion. We have two main sources of funds. We have taxpayers, and we have those who use the services, and most residents and businesses are both. The six-hundred-and-seventy million shown for the federal and provincial funding represents all grants that are directed toward particular services, such as social services, childcare services, long-term care, and others. This source of funds has increased by seventy-six million over last year. These conditional grants are not available to use for any other purposes. User fees and service charges of eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight million and property taxes of one-point-six billion are the main sources of revenue to support the operations of the city. Property taxes and payment in lieu of taxes make up more than fifty-two percent of the city's revenue. This slide shows the budgeted staffing requirements for each year in this term of council. We started at fifteen-thousand-ninety-five FTEs, and what we need for 2018 is fifteen-thousand-ninety-one FTEs. This is a net reduction of four-point-five-two FTEs for this term of council. The city has grown by more than forty thousand people in this term, and we have added seventy-five more police officers, thirty-eight paramedics, while managing all other growth within existing FTE levels. While there are eighty-two-point-four-three more FTEs in the draft 2018 budget than in 2017, forty-one of the new FTEs have no impact on the tax rate. They are funded by either provincial revenue, fees, or existing budgets. The remaining FTEs are either for emergency services, twenty-five for police, fourteen new paramedics, or as a result of new or expanded infrastructure in frontline services. Effectively, the city has been able to absorb the impact of growth without significantly changing the number of staff. We will now look at the operating budgets. As mentioned earlier, this presentation provides a summary total of all tax budgets combined, including police, public health, library, and transit. Council must approve a balanced budget. An additional one-hundred-and-eight million of spending pressures were identified for 2018. As you may recall, seven-point-two million of pressures in 2018 were addressed in the 2017 budget, as per the city manager's plan to deliver all the required efficiency savings for the remaining term of council within the 2017 operating budget. The additional spending pressures related to 2018 base adjustments, maintaining operations, growth, and council priorities are offset by increases in funding from revenue, taxes, and fees of one-hundred-and-eight million. Now, I will provide additional details for each item. The funding capacity that has been created as a result of tax increases, user fee increases, and revenue that we are receiving from other levels of government totals one-hundred-and-eight million. Of that, user fees and charges is four-point-four million, including the two-point-five percent increase in transit services. This reflects a regulatory inflationary increase to fees, additional interest earnings, and is offset by reductions in PILT revenue. The matching funding from provincial cost sharing is increasing by forty-seven-point-one million dollars. The largest increase in provincial revenues is in the childcare services, reflecting the new program. Five-point-two million is from the provincial upload for Ontario Works, moving the provincial share from ninety-seven-point-two percent to a hundred percent. Three-point-six million from caseload increases, and the remainder in other growth and program changes in social services and paramedics. For tax and assessment growth, we are projecting a one-point-three percent increase in the value of the assessment rule from new properties, which generates twenty-four-point-four million in taxes. The two-percent overall tax revenue increase plus the two-point-five percent increase in the transit levy generates another thirty-two-point-one million. In developing the draft budget, one of our first tasks is to review the current year performance against budget, to identify any adjustments that need to be made to the base budget. We look at what happened in the previous year, where there were cost or revenue increases or decreases that we had not anticipated and that are of a permanent nature. This table shows the key factors from 2017 that will have an impact in 2018. There's an additional thirteen-point-six million for childcare funded by provincial and federal governments to support access to licensed childcare for a hundred thousand additional children across the province over the next five years. We've added an additional base adjustment of two-point-three million to winter operations based on KP&amp;G's recommendations, which is in addition to last year's base adjustment of four-point-five million, bringing the total budget to sixty-eight-point-three. These increases are offset by one-time adjustments of four-point-two million. Next, we identify the costs to maintain the services that we are already providing. Labor costs, as usual, are the largest increase overall, and this is to be expected, given the fact that forty percent of our overall costs in the city are related to labor. The inflation in materials and contracts is budgeted at fifteen million. The increase to reserves and debt charges is the inflationary increase in the contribution to capital to keep up with inflation and ensure that we are not losing ground in terms of what is needed for capital spending. There's also a one-point-nine million increase in 2018 for IT security tools and to improve application performance. We have allocated thirty-point-one million dollars more for growth. We have allocated $30.1 million more for growth. As mentioned earlier, there are increases in children's services expenditures and matching revenue related to new and expanding programs. $8.5 million for early years child and family centers, and another $7.3 million for childcare fee subsidies and program delivery. Ontario Works caseload increases will add another $3.6 million in expenditures and matching revenue. There is $2.6 million for 25 additional police officers and annualization of the 2017 hires. Growth for transit is $2.3 million, primarily for the maintenance contract for the Confederation Line Fair Devices. Due to an increase in call volume demand, an increase of 14 paramedics, including one vehicle, is required to maintain council-approved response times.
There's also another increase that is attributed to solid waste collection, and also an increase of new facilities maintenance in order to provide those services to parks and buildings.
There's also a $5.5 million increase to your contribution to capital, which is the amount identified in the LRFP as an increase each year to address the infrastructure gap and to reach an investment level that maintains our assets in a state of good repair. The LRFP also recommended an additional $5 million contribution to the renewal of assets from strategic initiatives funding for a total increase in capital contribution for renewal of $10.5 million in 2018. This is offset by the 2018 net budget pressures of $7.2 million that was addressed in 2017 and was used as one-time contribution to operations and capital in 2017. The increase being proposed for the rate budget is 4% for water, 5% for wastewater, and 5% for stormwater services as identified in the Long Range Financial Plan approved in September. This budget includes the new rates for the revised rate structure approved by council in October 2016 that will charge a fixed plus volumetric rate for water and wastewater and a fixed charge for stormwater based on property type and size. We've also included the 100% volumetric rate to accommodate the switch to the new rate in 2018. For an average household with a yearly consumption of 180 cubic meters of water, the annual increase will only be $7.50 using the new fixed plus volumetric rate. The new fixed charge will have a greater impact on households that consume very little water. The stormwater fee will be phased in at 50% of the full rate for properties that are not connected to city services in 2018. For the average rural household, the 5% increase in stormwater will cost approximately $1.39 per year. These rate increases are assuming steady levels of consumption will increase revenues by $15.1 million. Like the tax budget, the rate budget has to be balanced. This additional revenue is offset by additional expenditures. The increase of $3.1 million to maintain operations is primarily for compensation and benefits increases and inflation on materials and supplies. The capital contribution is increasing by $1.9 million for all services in total, and per the Long Range Financial Plan, the 2018 draft budget for rate-supported services increases investment in capital and debt, which also increased debt servicing by $10.1 million. We now look at the capital budgets. In the last term of council, several major studies were completed and approved by council. They include the Transportation Master Plan Development Charges Background Study and the LRFP V that assess the state of repairs of all the capital assets and recommended a plan for closing the infrastructure gap. These plans have all been incorporated in the proposed capital budget for 2018. We also have the funding envelope for council priorities. Debt is being used in this budget as described in the fiscal framework within the limits established by council. We are forecasting 5.6% of own-source revenues on the tax side and 13.7% on the rate side for 2018 compared to 12.7 in 2017. The tax-supported capital budget for 2018 includes public transit, police services, and library. This budget totals $729.4 million. As mentioned earlier, this budget reflects the recommendations from the Long Range Financial Plans for tax and rate, increasing contributions to capital to reduce the infrastructure gap over 10 years for tax and five years for rate. 26% of the investments are in transit, 21% for water, wastewater, and stormwater services, and 13% for the integrated roads projects. The proposed $729.4 million capital budget is funded from a variety of sources, but basically it is cash and debt. $56.6 million is primarily coming from other levels of government, the reserves portion, which is cash, and is funded from contributions to capital on both the tax and rate side. This makes up 55% of the funding for capital. There's also some DC cash and debt to fund growth projects. In total, there is $210.5 million in new debt authority that is required to fund the proposed 2018 capital program, which is slightly higher than last year's figure of $193 million of debt. The next two slides break down the capital spending to a lower level of detail for tax and rate between renewal, growth, and strategic initiatives. For tax-supported capital, the total authority is $528 million. 54% of this new authority is for renewal, 32% for growth, and 14 for strategic initiatives. More than half of this amount will be funded from capital reserves or cash and 26% from debt. The remainder will come from government funding and development charges. For rate-supported capital, the authority is $202 million. 94% of rate capital investments are for renewal of assets, and only 4% for growth and less than 2% for strategic initiatives. More than 61% of the $202 million will be funded from capital reserves or cash and 35% from debt. This slide provides a forecast of the 2017 and 18 year-end reserve balances. These reflect the current forecast and may vary once we close the year. However, based on current forecasts and input from the draft 2018 operating capital budget, reserves overall are projected to decrease from $298.8 million to $274.9 million. The most significant decrease is for transit, and this is only because we have been building the reserves in transit in anticipation of the city's share of the spending that was required in 2017 and will be required in 2018 for light rail. Lastly, on the budget timetable, we have the committee, board, and commission budget meetings scheduled on November 21st running until December 11th. It is at these meetings that individuals can ask about particular items in the budget. All the information is available on the website, and the public is invited to come out to a committee meeting to discuss what is of concern to them. To provide comments on the draft budget, residents can email budget@ottawa.ca or contact their local ward councillor. Council will meet on December 13th to consider draft budget and any recommendations stemming from the budget meetings, and then it is at that point that the budget will be adopted. In conclusion, Mr. Mayor, I want you to offer my thanks to senior management and staff that have supported this budget process, and in particular, the finance staff, for their hard work and dedication throughout the year, but particularly at budget time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very, very much, Isabel, and Marion, and the whole team. So we'll hold off on, just as you know, very high-level process questions, and we'll go to Committee of Adjustment. There's no presentation for this, so the council receive and table Committee of Adjustment. Carried. Crime Prevention, there's no presentation. Receive and table. Carried. Ottawa Police Services Board will ask Councillor El Shantiri as Chair of the Board and Chief Bordelot and Director General Fraser to come to the table. I leave their spaces beside Mr. Chenye. They'll be followed by the Ottawa Public Library, then Ottawa Board of Health, and then we'll go back to Ms. Jasmine for global questions. So Chair El Shantiri, welcome. Chief Bordelot, Director General Fraser, the floor is yours.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. Mayor and colleague. Earlier this morning, Mr. Mayor, the Ottawa Police Service Board received the draft budget for 2018. Budget 18 highlights meets the board direction of 2%. Complete the 75 officer three-years hire and plan, 25 in 2018. Addresses the $4 million of 2017 operating budget risk, LTD, long-term disability, and WSIB, overtime, and legal settlement and claims. $600,000 of revenue from background check fee proposed still need the board approval. Including funding for CEW expansion require also separate police board approval, multi-year action plan, unbiased neutral policing, response to combat legalization opioid crisis, recruiting program, and gender program. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it to our chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your worship, members of council, thank you very much for the invitation to present our draft 2018 budget. As you all know, our community is changing, and it is becoming more and more diverse, and the police service needs to continue to reflect the community it serves. So we've launched our gender project. We want to ensure that we continue to be diversified as a police service, and we've relaunched an outreach recruitment plan. And we have to be adaptive to the shifting crime trends that are taking place in our community. We have seen over the past couple of years an increase in criminal code offenses, specifically around violent crime in our community, and we've been very concerned around that and employing strategies to deal with that. But we've also seen an impact on social disorder issues or matters that are non-criminal natures that have been putting pressure on our police service.
In addition, we've seen new bills that were introduced this year. Cannabis will be legal in 2018. There's a new bill on surveillance and police services, as well as a new act on police services in Ontario, which will have an impact on Ottawa. So the result is that there'll be more demand on our services as well as equipment and training.
Expectations continue to grow with respect to more accountability on policing operations, more transparency, and also in dealing with social disorder issues in our community. This results in increasing budget pressures, and the field of profession of policing is becoming more and more complex.
This is why we've made changes to our service delivery model in order to be more efficient in our services.
Here are a couple of examples of some of the major projects that are underway in order to ensure that we continue to become an effective police service and we continue to meet the demands of our community. The service initiative is our new way of delivering our services to our community that focuses on core placing the roles and puts officers where we need them and where we need them. The multi-year action plan is a culmination of a number of initiatives to ensure that we are and will continue to be a biased-neutral police service, and we are delivering those services in a bias-free way. We recognize the impact and toll police work is having on our members. That's why we have a comprehensive wellness program, which includes R2MR training, peer support, and an increase in the number of officers and members that are going through our REU program. Internally, we want to make sure that all women have access to equal opportunities for transfers and promotions. The gender audit that we just conducted, the first in Canada in policing, resulted in a number of policy changes and a change in our culture. We are proud of the work that we have done in leading the way in policing in this area. And as a police service, we continue to leverage technology to support our members and to make the work, the very difficult work they have to do, easier, to give them access to information and the tools they need to deal with the complex situations that are faced with on a daily basis. And we ensure to continue to make sure that our facilities serve the ever-growing community that we have and provide space for members doing the work that they do.
Mr. Mayor, we bring forward each year some benchmark data to help track Ottawa police against the major police services across Canada. Statistics Canada provides this information as a way for police services to compare one another. And what this data does, it identifies how many police members, sworn and civilian, how many of them support the citizens in Ottawa. The data is 2016 data, that's the latest, and it shows that for every police member in the Ottawa Police Service, either sworn or civilian, they support 521 citizens. You'll see we're a bit at the bottom of the pack when we compare ourselves to the other significant in size municipal police services across Canada. And this is an important benchmark because it's the start of the year of our 25-per-year officer program. So we're starting to see some impact on our staffing number. But when we look back to 2011, because we keep this data annually, we can see that we've been dropping in terms of the number in our support levels. So in 2011, it took fewer Ottawa police members to support the population. What we're seeing is that the population is growing ahead of the size of our police service, so we're, in fact, bringing on more clients per police officer.
As Deborah mentioned, in 2016, we recognized the impact this was having on our members and the ability to serve our community the way we wanted to. We engage in a three-year staffing plan, starting in 2016, for a total of 75 officers, which finishes in 2018. You'll see in a couple of slides in our forecast for 2019 to 2021, we are projecting to increase our complement by an additional 90 officers, 30 a year, in order to keep pace with the growth and the emerging pressures that we have in our city.
Mr. Mayor, this is a slide that kind of wraps up the five key financial aspects of the budget. You'll see that, as the chair pointed out, we're at a 2% budget increase. That's $8.5 million above last year's level, and that reflects the impact of assessment-based growth as well. Our net operating budget is now just under $300 million, at $294.3 million. We're a separate tax rate, and the increase on the police tax rate for 2% equals $12 for the average homeowner. For the average homeowner, the total police tax bill is expected to be $603 in 2018. Knock off the $100,000 there. Mr. Chair, here's kind of the way the budget plays out when we look at it in terms of the categories that we analyze with the city. So most of our budget is in the maintained services area, or most of the increase, $5.5 million. You'd expect that to be more because generally, our compensation increase alone is in the $9 million range. The reason it's less is that we've adjusted some of our pay-as-you-go contributions safely in order to help as a strategy to meeting the 2% budget target. So you'll see next year that the budget is once again $9 million for maintained services. The 25 officer program, this is the third year of it, so $2.6 million reflects the costs of the officers in 2018 plus the annualization of the previous 50 officers. Our modernization roadmap is the initiative we've launched to increase technological tools and provide new ways of doing business at Ottawa Police. The impact is $0.9 million for the new plant that comes on board with that new kind of technology. We're forecasting $0.6 million worth of efficiencies. They relate to a proposal we'll be bringing forward on the revenue side to the board with respect to background clearance checks. We've also, you're seeing here, a revenue loss of $0.1 million. We annually increase our user fees by 2%. We're adjusting downward the revenue that we receive from motor vehicle collision accident reports. That hasn't come in at the volume that we've expected. Altogether, then, that accounts for the $8.5 million increase, which is 2%. Our capital program, I know you're all astonished, it's not $10 million like it usually is, and that is, usually we're at $10 million. What you see here in the growth category is the impact of the South facility, Phase One of the South facility, which is $44.7 million, and it relates directly to the debt financing required in 2018. Normally, our budget is in the $10 million range, and it's financed almost entirely from pay-as-you-go contributions, which, as Isabel said, is cash on hand. So this is a bit of an unusual year for us. We have $30 million already set aside for the South facility. This brings Phase One to in the range of $75 million. We always provide a forecast to help identify the police service issues moving forward. You can see in the forecast, we expect that tax rates will be in the range of 3.5% to Two major contributors to that, we're continuing the strategic modernization initiatives, both on the facility strategic plan side and our modernization roadmap. And the chief spoke of the 30 officer per year program for 2019, 2020, and 21. Those are the most significant items driving the number. We have started to capture efficiencies as part of our roadmap number. So where we had a separate line before for efficiencies, we've netted that into the modernization roadmap line, and we can provide more detail on what those look like in the future. roadmap line, and we can provide more detail on what those look like in the future.
Thank you, Deborah. And, Mr. Mayor, this is overall the draft budget. I would invite all my colleagues to attend the Finance and Audit Committee meeting that's going to take place at 10:00 a.m. at the Hannawood Room on November 20th. Also, the public delegation and approval of 2018 police budget will take place on November 27 also. And if my colleague or the public will be welcome to attend and present their comments. I'd like to take this opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to say thank you to my colleagues on the board, Tim Tierney, Alan Hubley, and the public member Suzanne Velikat, Sandy Smallwood, and Carl Nicholson. And I want to say thanks to all our team here from the executive members, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much, Counselor. Again, questions of a general nature? Counselor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to the Chair, the Chief, and the Executive Director for your presentation. I do have lots of questions, which I'll direct at the public meetings that you just described. My question, though, is if for members of my ward who are interested, you do have the committee meeting on the 20th that you just mentioned, and then the Police Services Board meeting at the end of the month. Normally, folks are directed to the Police Services Board meeting. What exactly is going to be on your agenda on the committee meeting? Should people come to the committee meeting to have their say? Or is it more beneficial to have the entire Police Services Board members at that meeting and have them directed to the Police Services Board meeting instead? I'm looking for your direction.
Thank you, Counselor. Through the Chair, I have also invited all the board members to attend the Finance and Audit Committee. As you know, the committee don't make decisions, they just receive and also make recommendations to the board. So I welcome all my colleagues to attend the committee meeting, and also City Council, if they have their question, that's the place to be.
Is that committee meeting held specifically on the budget?
That's right.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
That's the perfect kind of question. Thank you. Counselor Flurry, please.
Mr. Chair, just to follow up on Counselor Brockington's comments. So if we're unable to attend the Finance Committee, what is the procedure at the board? Because are we, will we be able to ask questions, or are we going to have to sign in as a delegation? We do have, I do have a series of questions, and I'm not sure that I'm able to attend the committee itself. So can I attend the board and ask questions?
Well, Counselor, we do have a procedure to present to the board in five minutes. I prefer, if you can attend the committee meeting, if you send us all your questions. But I believe you and I and the Chief were scheduled to have a separate meeting before the budget meeting, and I think that's when you'll be able to ask your question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup. So on the police board, it's receiving table, carried. Next, Ottawa Public Library, Chair Tierney with CEO Danielle McDonald. And I want to thank Counselor Tierney. He introduced me to Sarah McLaughlin yesterday at a great event where they're now, they received $140,000 from Sun Life, I think, to have an instrument lending component to the library in downtown and in Centre Point. So thank you, Counselor Tierney. And Ms. McDonald, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, good morning.
... board. I'm also accompanied here today by our CEO, Danielle McDonald, with this year's draft 2018 budget.
Ottawa Public Library has had a lot of success in 2017.
The OPL programs. We've received provincial recognition for our à la carte food literacy program. We celebrated Canada's 150 with some marquee events, all of them themed around arts and storytelling. We had Allen Doyle kicking off the New Year celebrating storytelling through music. It was a great event. We had positive feedback from our customers, and you can see the graphic on the screen. It represents 97% of the parents saying that their child maintained or increased reading skills by participating in our summer reading club. And yesterday, we announced a new collection in our library, Sun Life Music Instruments Lending Library. This means now we can lend out instruments from our main and European branch. And as the Mayor alluded to, we got to meet Sarah McLaughlin, which was quite the treat. The Ottawa Public Library draft 2018 budget. It builds on the 2017 budget, adding $1.49 million envelope allocated to the City of Ottawa, council. Once the lifecycle and accessibility expenditures are added, the library has a total budget envelope of $49.3 million. Our budget envelope will be spent in three primary categories. First, it comes to our mandatory cost. The biggest is compensation. Second, under the priorities category, we'll be increasing the materials budget, automating our scheduling system, including adding an FTE to our support system, and investing in employee training. And lastly, we'll need to take into account the financial adjustments as required by The library expects to spend $4.17 million in capital dollars. The biggest investment will go to the new Rosemount branch, a 100-year-old facility, and we are allocating $2 million. And to replace our Bookmobile Unit 2, to the amount of $750,000. Our fee schedule will be adjusted to reflect the inflationary costs related to a variety of services, as well as our new Sun Life Musical Instrument Library lending program, which includes the associated fees related to the late returns and replacement charges. At this point, I'll get our CEO, Danielle McDonald, to summarize.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. En résumé, le budget que...
Thank you. The budget that we presented today is in line with the given targets of City Council and includes additional FTE, modernization of our priority branch, that's Rosemount, the replacement of a Bookmobile, that's really old, and the automatization of the system for employee schedules. So after all this, over three years, we will have more accessible technologies. Thank you.
And that concludes our 2018 draft budget. I do want to thank our Ottawa Public Library staff for the tremendous work they put in year after year after year. They find a way to make it happen, so thank you for that.
Great. Thank you very much, Counselor Tierney, and Ms. McDonald very much. I see no questions, so appreciate your presentation. So on the library board, receiving table, carried. Our next group is the Ottawa Board of Health, Conseil de Santé d'Atouah. Chair Cadri, accompanied by Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Levy. And as some of you know, this is Dr. Levy's last budget with us. I know he's very disappointed not to be dealing with budgets at the city level, but we wish him the very best, and we thank him for his many years of dedicated service. It's been a pleasure to work with you, Doctor, and I know you're here for a few more weeks, and we'll have a more formal opportunity to thank you, but we do appreciate all of your good work, and we wish you the very best at Canadian blood service. So thank you. And Counselor Cadri, please, has the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good morning. Excuse me. Good morning, Members of Council. As the Chair of the Ottawa Board of Health, I will be presenting our 2018 draft operating budget. I'm joined this morning, as Mayor mentioned, with Dr. Levy as a Medical Officer of Health, and also with Dr. Vera Etches, our Deputy Minister of Public Health. So welcome to you both. Bonjour, étite président.
Very good morning. As Chair of the Health Commission of Ottawa, I will be tabling the budget, preliminary budget for 2018 of the Health Board of Ottawa.
Has tabled an operational budget of $60.1 million that balances expenses, estimates against anticipated revenues. If approved, the budget will present a funding provision for just over $13 million from the city, which represents an increase of $415,000 over 2017, which aligns with the council-approved guidelines. The budget also includes an assumption that we will receive a $305,000 increase from the provincial government on cost-shared programs and no increase on 100% provincially-funded programs. This reflects past patterns. The budget was developed with a view to compliance with the Ontario Public Health standards, emerging community health need issues, and the board's strategic priorities. This slide shows the strategic priorities identified by the Board of Health at the beginning of this term. They include developing and adapting workforce, advancing healthy eating and active living, and fostering mental health in our community. The board is satisfied with our progress being made on its priorities. Ontario Health Protection and Promotion Act provides the legislative mandate for boards of health and the board array of health services we deliver. In addition, there are other provincial statutes that identify specific duties for boards of health and medical officer of health, including Immunization of School Pupils Act, Safe Drinking Water Act, and Smoke Free Ontario Act. Under the HPPA, there are 21 regulations that govern areas of service, such as food safety, rabies, and communicable disease control. Several of these are presently under review, and the implications of possible amendments have not been factored in to this budget proposal. Also, under the authority of HPPA, the MOH LTC publishes the Ontario Public Health Standards, which are the minimum standards and expectations for the provisions of public health services to which all boards of health must comply. These standards, too, are under review. It's my pleasure now to pass the microphone over to Dr. Levy for the rest of the presentation.
Merci beaucoup, Chair and Mayor, councils. Thank you very much for your kind words, Mayor. So the proposed budget that is being presented is built to essentially maintain core services, and we do that, of course, while addressing the pressures that are the costs associated with the collective agreement settlements and inflation pressures. It's also designed, though, to allow OPH the flexibility to seek new funding, which we do to enhance our ability to address emerging community health needs. And we anticipate in 2018 that the kinds of emerging health needs that we'll be looking for alternative sources of funding outside of this budget include drug use prevention and, of course, overdose prevention and response. And that would include Ottawa Public Health's future approach to the opioid crisis. We also know that we'll be needing to keep up with the rest of the health sector and putting public health into the electronic public health record world, and we want to continue investments in reconciliation initiatives. This slide shows the breadth of program areas at Ottawa Public Health and the anticipated sources and amounts of revenues from the Board of Health's two major funders, being, of course, the Provincial Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, as well as the Provincial Ministry of Children and Youth Services, and City Council.
With the city increases and provincial increases, some adjustments to these figures will represent an increase of $607,000 to the public health budget for 2018.
As Chek Hadry indicated earlier, though, the budget is built on assumptions. The new Ontario Public Health standards, we now expect will be finally released next week, and we'll be assessing those standards over the next several months in the organization. At this time, then, we cannot really fully predict the impact that will have on our operations, so 2018 will be a year of transition to adjust to those new requirements. We also anticipate, as I've mentioned, further funding opportunities, and specifically in 2018, we expect that there'll be funding opportunities for agencies to address the opioid crisis. The budget, as I've mentioned before you, does not reflect this, because the specific details of where other levels of government intend to direct those resources have not yet been made available. But with respect to overdose prevention and response, as some of you will know, in the spring of this year, Ottawa Public Health collaborated with partners to develop a coordinated multi-agency approach, and that approach is currently being incrementally implemented by several entities within Ottawa. I'll ask Dr. Etches to provide an overview briefly of this approach to end us. Thanks.
Merci. Le budget pour 2018. The budget for 2018 includes $350,000 added to our base funding from the province to support the public health contribution to fight against the overdose crisis.
... the province. It's better measure what is actually happening with street-level data, with data from paramedics, police, and hospital emergency rooms, so that we can identify the communities and populations at risk. We're supporting education and awareness for youth in schools, as well as through community-based agencies that work with youth and parents. And we're also working with peers, that's people who use drugs who are most at risk of overdose, to best reach them and create an environment where people don't use alone and they carry naloxone. Other work we're doing is evaluating the new Health Canada-approved supervised injection service. And this is offered by Ottawa Public Health, but we are collaborating, facilitating collaboration amongst all those agencies, planning to or offering supervised injection service. We're also promoting access to community withdrawal treatment and addictions medicine services in our conversations with the local health integration network. We believe that they have also received some opioid-specific funding. We're continuing to work to prevent overdoses by working on things like promoting mental health with our partners, early childhood development. And there are many root causes for substance use and overdose that we'll continue to work on with these partners. We continue to work with our partners. Crisis are complex, and so we'll continue to collaborate through things like the Overdose Prevention and Response Task Force to address this health crisis in our city.
Thank you very much to Dr. Vera Etches and Dr. Levy. In 2018, the Board of Health will continue to deliver the high-quality programs and services residents have come to rely on. OPH looks forward to its continued role in advancing health promotion, disease prevention, and health protection in 2018 and beyond. Councilors and members of the public are welcome to provide comments on the draft budget until the next Board of Health meeting on December 11th, where the board will be hearing from public delegations, and you're welcome to be part of that process. Before I pass the floor over to my colleagues for some high-level questions, I just want to add to Mayor Watson's comments about Dr. Levy's last budget being today, and although he's not finished as of yet, but I do want to wish him all the best and all the success as the Chair of the Board, and I hope I'm echoing the Chair's, the Board's thoughts, that the professionalism that Dr. Levy has displayed over the last 10 years in his role as a Medical Officer of Health is to be commended. And based on that professionalism, I think he's leaving behind a very strong Ottawa Public Health team for us to continue to work with, that he started and that the Board of Health has started. Thank you very much, and over to the floor for questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Chair and Doctor and Doctor, Counselor Shirelli. He's back with us here after his media scrum.
Thank you, Your Worship. First of all, I wanted to begin by congratulating Counselor Cadri on the job he's been doing as Chair. I think it's been steady and consistent and reliable, and certainly something... I think it's been steady and consistent and reliable, and certainly something that helps all members of council as we deal with these issues. So, thank you for that. And Dr. Levy, want to say the same thing about—to you. You really have steadied the ship at public health. I remember when you took over, it was a huge challenge to get it to the position we're in now, and you've done a great job. And I know when—even though I disagreed with many of the things you've brought forward, I think you've done a great job. And also, just from a personal point of view, I remember eight years ago, you and I were sitting together in the audience at a meeting here, and I mentioned to you that I had a very severe pain, chronic pain in my hip, and you said, "You drive a lot, don't you?" And I said, "Yes." And he says, "Oh, could you just walk in front of me?" So I did. And then you reached out and grabbed the wallet out of my back pocket and said, "Drive without this in your back pocket." I did, and two weeks later, I was cured. So thank you for that, too, and that's all I wanted to say.
That's right, pay cut for Rick Shirelli. Okay, thank you very much, Chair—oh, sorry, councillor—
No, no, I just want to say that was a very high-level question.
Thank you, thank you very much. Receive and table the Board of Health recommendations carried. FTE analysis information supplemental to budget estimates received. Questions of a general nature to staff? Councillor Neusbaum?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question and a request—the request is it would be great to get a copy of the presentation that Ms. Jasmine put up on the screen, so if that can be emailed to councillors, that would be fantastic. And the question was—I didn't—I didn't quite catch it, I'm sure it was there somewhere, but what is the anticipated increased revenue in 2018 from the reduction of the property tax vacancy rebate?
I didn't hear the question, councillor, can you repeat it?
The property tax—the vacancy program continues in 2019, so there is no change in it, so it actually eliminates in 2019.
Oh, I thought there was a phasing in 2018, is that—is that not correct?
There is a slight phasing, but we're hoping that the result is that—is that we'll actually be able to have an actual that matches the budget, as opposed to right now, we're always considerably over the budget in that area, so we're just hoping that it just—it gets us to budget, but it will actually be eliminated in 2019.
So what is the amount that you're budgeting to have to spend in terms of offering the vacancy rebate in the 2018 budget?
In the 2018 budget, I believe we are somewhere around $7.9 million for vacancy rebates.
Thank you.
That's a good point, councillor, thank you. Councillor Wilkinson, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, I've been looking in here to see where the $500,000 we've been talking about for—for new social programs, and I think there's the new—for new ones and ones that need extra funding, and I can't find it.
In this budget, we have a 3% increase for the social service agencies, and we have a top-up that brings them to $1 million. There is no on-ramp program included in this budget. What the mayor has indicated is that there is to be a review in 2018 of the existing allocations to see if there is some capacity within that, and then that would be considered for the 2019 budget.
Well, that could be, but I'm surprised that we don't look after this year while we're doing that study. I guess we'll have to ask more questions about that when we get into details. Thank you.
Great, thank you, councillor Wilkinson. Okay, so on page three, we have the recommendations which are one, two, and three, carried. Okay, we're now on to page seven of our agenda. Corporate services, Sylvie Cheneau, item eight, bylaws to authorize $102 million debenture issue. This is the green debenture. Could Ms. Similak just give a brief overview? This is quite an historic moment, because we're the first city, I believe, to go down this route of a green bond, and something I think we should be proud of, councillor—Ms. Similak?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and yes, it is something that I think this council and this city should be proud of. We are the first municipality in Canada to issue what is referred to as a green debenture. And what that means is that those funds can only be used for projects that meet the criteria of being green. In this case, all of these funds, the $102 million that we raised, will be used towards stage two of Light Rail, which, as you know, is—provides for a significant reduction in greenhouse gases. As part of issuing this debenture, we had to establish a green framework, which is on the city's website, which outlines how we will use these funds, how we will track the use of these funds, and how we will report to the investors every year that these funds, in fact, are achieving the objectives that they were intended for. The work that was done on this by the Treasury Group was significant, and Mark Martin, the manager of Treasury, was—has been the—has been the cheerleader for this process for almost two years now. He was able to basically convince the banks to provide the funds to us to have—provide—it has to have a yearly audit, to have—to pay for the audit, so there's no cost to the taxpayers as a result of that. And secondly, when we went out to market this, he worked with the banks and was able to get enough support for this that when we went live, we actually could have issued $250 million. There was enough demand at that point in time to provide that level of debt. As a result, we were able to lower the price, to lower the interest rate on it, and by one and a half to two basis points, and that will save us, the city taxpayer, $400,000 over the life of the debenture. The other thing I wanted to mention is that not only is it—we have to use it for green purposes, but the only people who can buy it are investors who are certified as green investors as well. So it's a very—it's a win-win. We provided a product that's getting to be of high demand out there, and the city taxpayers are the beneficiaries of it.
Great, thank you. Councillor Chernyschenko, please.
Thank you very much. A week ago, I engaged in some hyperbole on the radio, so at risk of doing it twice in about 10 days. I am absolutely thrilled to—with the work that you've done to see this come forward. It was probably about a year ago that I—I brought an inquiry to—to committee about whether the city was pursuing the idea of green bonds, what exactly they were, what we—if we were eligible for them, what the benefits were, and I was informed at the time that, yes, staff had been looking at it, but we were still in sort of the early days of—of that process. And so it is great to see that you've come this far. I thank you and—and your staff, everyone who has worked on this. I think the main point I want to make in—in support of this is that a city that has an excellent credit rating, that has clearly demonstrated that money is going towards the definition of what a green project is, develops a reputation as being a very reliable borrower, and that this is money that is—these projects, these so-called green projects, offer a phenomenal rate of return to the city in the sense of the savings that we—that we generate. I was just chatting to councillor Fleury about money being invested at Ottawa Community Housing for energy retrofits of—of their buildings and what the returns are there. There was a stat in—a—in an article yesterday in The Citizen about the new building code, national building code being debated. For every dollar invested in a higher-energy retrofits of a building or better equipment, the expected return is $5 to $8, and for an economy of $5 to $8 GDP improvement per dollar spent, you can't get a return, you know, anything legal for that in any other way. And so that the city be pursuing all opportunities, whether it's through our own building improvements. I'm pleased to see there's significant money in—in this budget we have before us, but also in transit and the many benefits that come out of that. I—I think it's great. So thank you for—for getting us started. I think there's a lot of opportunity for us in—in green bonds and debentures.
Thank you. Councillor Lieber, please.
Thank you, Chair, and congratulations on this. I just want to make sure that it's clear in my mind exactly what these are. You're going to be paying 3.25%. Is that appreciably different than anything else in the other paper in the market right now?
It was one and a half basis points less than we would have paid if we'd gone to a regular debenture. So that's what saved—that's what's resulting in the savings of $400,000 over the term.
And the—the advantage that accrues to the investor, is that just entirely the—the halo effect of investing in green projects?
The—there's a demand out there. There are investors are requiring—are looking for specific things with—to do with their money, and so this allows these investors to say, "Yes, we've purchased green bonds," and basically increase their overall pool of investors as a result of it. It—it basically is creating a new market, if you want to call it.
That's the—the ethical investment market, so the ethical investor is looking for this type of product, and they're willing to take a trade-off, I guess, in the interest rates that they're receiving in order to get it.
That's correct.
Fascinating. That's great, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Great, thanks, councillor Lieber. On the report, carried. Committee reports, rapport des comités, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 29, rapport numéro 20 du comité de l'agriculture des affaires rurales, zoning bylaw amendment part of 3315 Shea Road. Planning Committee Report number 53, rapport numéro 53 du comité de l'urbanisme, park development manual, second edition. Carried. Thank you, councillor Harder, I know a lot of work went into that, as did you did on this item as well. Item 11, Building Better and Smarter Suburbs Infrastructure Standards Review, Arturo Road Cross Sections. Carried. Item number 12, MOU with CRT Developments, respecting the acquisition of Shea Road Woods through Parkland Dedication and Cash. Councillor Cadre, please, I know worked hard on this as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and it is my pleasure to ask council to hopefully approve this agreement going forward after today's meeting, and I'm very pleased that the plan to protect the Shea Road Woods has come to fruition. Proud of the work that has gone into creating this agreement, both from the perspective of staff and the community's involvement. In the first 20 days of beginning of this term, I had presented this item to Mayor Watson for consideration in the term of council. I am incredibly pleased today, and on behalf of Stittsville community, would like to thank the mayor, city staff, along with CRT Development for their support in working with me to protect this important green space so that it can continue to be enjoyed by Stittsville community and future generations. I would also like to thank councillor and Planning Committee Chair Jan Harder for providing her support along with the committee members. Protecting green spaces like the Shea Road Woods is not only an ecological priority, it is also commitment to quality of life for our residents, who value having places where they can enjoy nature within the city. This particular piece of land, Mr. Mayor, has been enjoyed by the community for the last 35 years, although maybe unofficially, but it is one of those piece of properties that fits well into the green plan that was just announced going forward in terms of protecting cities' green spaces and tree canopy. So if I can get support from the council, I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. I—I recall that meeting very vividly at the term of council. It was one of your great priorities, and I was pleased to go and meet with you and some of your residents. It's a beautiful part of the city, and I thank you for your work on this. It's—it's going to serve many generations to come for great recreational trails and walking dogs and so on, and I think councillor Harder is either waving to me or—go ahead.
Press my button.
Sure.
So I just wanted to say, because we didn't—we didn't speak to this at committee, but, you know, this is a partnership also with three developers, not just one, and I think that that's quite unique, and I—I hope to have that continue. It's Claridge, Richcraft, and Taggart, and I just think that that's another good sign, and it's another opportunity that we have to partner with—the—with the development communities in different ways as opportunity arises. Thank you.
That's great. On the motion, carried, thank you. Item number 13 is an application to Walter 61 Park Road, a property located in Rockcliffe Heritage Conservation District designated Part V of the Ontario Heritage Act. Demand de modification de 61 Chemin Park. Carried. Item number 14, a zoning bylaw amendment part of 6211 Renault Road, modification de règlement de zonage par ci de 6111 Chemin Renault. I know councillor Blay would like to dissent. On the report, councillor Blay and Tierney, dissent. And Hubley, I'm sorry. I think the—was this not on Maple, councillor? Are you on Renault as well, councillor Hubley?
Renault, okay.
Zone—item number 15 is zoning bylaw amendment 1620 and 1636 Maple Grove, modification de règlement de zonage 1, 6, 0, et 1, 6, 3, 6, Chemin Maple Grove. Councillor Cadre wishes to dissent. Not councillor Hubley, correct? So it's just Renault and councillor Cadre just on Maple. Correct, okay. Item number 16, zoning bylaw amendment 991 Carling Avenue, modification de règlement au règlement, excusez-moi, de zonage 991 Avenue Carling. Dissent by councillor Fleury on Carling. Item number 17, Green Bank Road Water Main Class Environmental Assessment Study, étude d'évaluation de l'environnementale de portée générale liée au projet de la conduite d'eau principale de Chemin Green Bank. Carried. Item 18, étude d'évaluation environnementale de règlement North Island, North Island Link Environmental Assessment Study. Carried. Transportation Committee Report number 28, rapport numéro 20 du comité de transport. Item 19, Always Stop Control at the Intersection of Famille-Laporte Avenue and Mishwash-Cody Street, Minotary Ridge, the intersection of Vista Park Drive and Clarrington Avenue, and the intersection of Harvest Valley Avenue and Glastonbury Walk-Bodleire Drive. Carried. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? On the consent agendas presented, carried. The in-camera item material has been circulated. Does anyone have any reason to go in-camera? So councillor Taylor, I believe, seconded by councillor Manette, if you would bring the motion forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Manette, the rules of procedure be suspended to consider the following motion, as the Civic Institute of Professional Personnel has recently advised they have ratified the proposed collective agreement.
On suspension, carried.
Thank you. Whereas the City of Ottawa and the Civic Institute of the Professional Personnel, CIPP, have committed to working collaboratively to resolve issues of mutual concern in the workplace, and whereas the collective agreement between the city and CIPP expired on December 31, 2016, and whereas the bargaining teams for the city and CIPP have been in negotiations in an effort to renew the collective agreement on mutually agreeable terms, and whereas the city and CIPP bargaining teams reached a tentative agreement on September 25, 2017, subject to ratification by the CIPP membership and the city council, and whereas the tentative agreement is affordable and fair to taxpayers and our employees, therefore be it resolved that city council ratify the tentative agreement reached with CIPP, and be it further resolved that the terms of the tentative agreement be made public.
Okay, so on the motion, carried, adopté, merci. Motion to adopt reports, motion important adoption des rapports. Councillor Kakish, seconded by councillor Taylor, please.
At the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 29, Planning Committee Report 53, Transportation Committee Report 28, the report from the city clerk and solicitor's office entitled Summary of Oral and Ren public submissions for items subject to Bill 73, explanation requirements at the city council meeting of October 25, 2017, the report from the General Manager of Service Innovation and Performance entitled FTE Analysis Report, information supplemental to the budget estimates, and the report from the Deputy City Treasurer, Corporate Finance, entitled Bylaw Swath Rise, $102 million debenture issue be received and adopted as amended.
On the motion as presented, carried. Motions of which have been previously given. Councillor Fleury's motion, seconded by councillor Wilkinson, which notice was given at the last council meeting, has been withdrawn pursuant to section 60, bracket six of the procedure bylaw. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Councillor Deans has a motion, seconded by councillor Taylor, with respect to Bill 148. On suspension, carried. Councillor Deans?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll just read the motion and then I'll just—I'll speak to it briefly. Whereas Bill 148, Fair Workplaces, Better Jobs Act 2017, is currently being debated in the Legislative Assembly of Ontario, and whereas the City of Ottawa employs 485 volunteer firefighters, which represents 36% of its firefighting force, and whereas the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, which supports the intent of Bill 148, has nevertheless raised— of Ontario, which supports the intent of bill 148, has nevertheless raised concerns about the impacts of certain provisions on municipalities, and has proposed a number of specific amendments. One, an exemption for municipal and local board employees, including supervisory and managerial staff who are required to be on-call to provide statutory public safety services. Two, an exemption for volunteer firefighters for on-call provisions and equal pay to full-time firefighters. And three, specific references that bill 148 requirements do not override other statutory obligations, that municipal governments are required to provide public safety. And whereas bill 148's proposed provisions are expected to add significant cost to providing public safety services in the city of Ottawa, which is being reported by the Ottawa Citizen as up to $13 million annually, with the highest anticipated impact on the delivery of fire services in rural communities, therefore be it resolved that council support AMO's position on the proposed amendments to bill 148, and that Mayor Watson send a letter to the province of Ontario detailing the city's position. Mr. Mayor, if I could just speak briefly to this, I think that most people know bill 148 for including the increase in minimum wage to $15 in two years' time, but the bill also includes several other elements that could affect municipalities. The motion today is about a piece that seeks to change the way that on-call workers are paid. For the city of Ottawa, this could have significant impacts because of our 485 volunteer firefighters. We rely on the great work of these volunteers, and the proposed changes, as they currently are, could see a significant impact on our budgets. And as I said in the motion, Ottawa Citizen is reporting that to be about $13 million annually. AMO has already stated that they believe the intention of bill 148 is good, but because of the impacts on municipalities, are working to amend it accordingly. The motion today asks that the city support AMO's position on amendments, including exempting those who are on-call for statutory public safety services, an exemption for volunteer firefighters, and assurance that the new bill will not override a municipality's obligation to provide public safety. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, councillor Deans. It's an important issue for us. I appreciate you raising it. Does anyone have any questions on the motion? Councillor Neusbaum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question about the motion. The Ottawa Citizen is a reputable newspaper, no fake news there, but I'm just wondering whether staff can confirm that that amount of $13 million is roughly accurate. I presume that that number came from somewhere, so.
Similak?
The Citizen extrapolated that number from their discussions with AMO. We are in the process right now of actually trying to determine what would be the impact on the city of Ottawa, but we think it could go up to that amount. But at this point in time, we haven't done all the work to give you a definitive city of Ottawa impact.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. On the motion by councillor Deans, carried. Notice the motion for consideration at subsequent meeting, avis de motion pour examen réunion A notice of intent, avis d'intention, notice of intent for the integrity commissioner to submit the 2017 annual report for consideration at the city council meeting of November 22, 2017. Motion to introduce bylaws, motion important presentation de règlement, councillor Kakish, seconded by councillor Taylor, please.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion introduced bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Motion, carried. Confirmation bylaw, councillor Kakish, please.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of November 8, 2017.
Carried. Do we have any written inquiries, Madam Deputy Clerk? Adjournment, councillor Kakish?
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of November 8, 2017 be adjourned.
Carried. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup. Meeting adjourned.[1420.88]